Good afternoon. I'd like to open up the Hamilton County Commissioners Board Meeting of March the 4th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much. We will go through our regular agenda as we always do for our regular meeting, but before we have silent prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask everyone who's listening and watching to please remember Bridget Doherty, whose father-in-law has recently passed, Kim Lee, whose mother has also passed, and also remember Leslie Ervey, who's assistant to our clerk. Remember her in your thoughts and prayers also. And if we could have silent prayer and a Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. Thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I would be remiss if I did not also mention that Major Earl Price, his funeral was Tuesday, and the Commission, the Board of Commission, did give a proclamation to the family for his long service. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Ms. Somer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drew House?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Can anyone see anyone on one on the line or in the waiting room?
No, Madam President, there are no public comments.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll go to comments and motions of the Commissioners. Vice President, Commissioner Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to join in the memory of Major Earl Edward Price Jr. Just want to say I had a chance to go to the funeral, and I know that we submitted a resolution to the family at that time, but I did want to let you know that I did have a chance to go to the funeral this week for Major Earl Edward Price, and I just wanted to note that. Also wanted to, I also say that I did have a good meeting with the CEO of the Health Collaborative and got a lot of great updates from him, and I just want to thank him for that. I want to also indicate that there was, we indicate, we talked about last week, a study that came out that had a concern about African-Americans dying at, dying at ages that were not as high as non-African-Americans, and I know that there is a concern trying to get African-Americans into the next class because they are dying at higher rates. And so just wanted to let you know that I have indicated that I am supportive of that. And then also wanted to reiterate that I am also supportive and looking at the possibility of having a mobile, a mobile bus that could go into African-American and minority communities that would not only have the vaccine and testing, but also provide resources that we have already made available so that more people can connect with those resources. So just want to give you the board a heads-up that I will be coming back with that relatively soon, and we're looking into that, similar to the Hampton University model that I mentioned last week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to lend my sympathies and condolences to the family of Major Earl Price. He was a great partner to this Commission and really stepped up when it came to the issue of racial disparities and how we were going to work through some training exercises with the Sheriff's Office. So I want to join both of you in offering sympathy and condolence to the family. Also, Jen Ketter has left us. She went over to JFS. She was a budget analyst for the Commission, and she was a very bright light in this office and in on our floor here, and she will be greatly missed, not only for her expertise and her work ethic, but also for her spirit and for her liveliness, that she used to coordinate events for us, and she'll be missed. So, you know, good, good luck to Jen and her future endeavors. And then also, as I mentioned, I think, last week, the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition had an annual report that was presented on Friday. You two have, I hope, received it from my office. What was so notable, not outside of the obvious collaboration, that is always the hallmark of the HCARC, was that our numbers of overdoses are down in Hamilton County, not by a lot, and it's something that we do not celebrate because there are over 400 deaths related to overdoses in Hamilton County last year. However, the trend we saw nationwide was a pretty sharp increase in overdose deaths. And so we are starting to think about what, what mattered here in Hamilton County and what some of our relative success was due to. And I think at first blush, it's the collaboration amongst the group. I mean, it's having a bunch of experts come together and figure out how to connect the dots and try to get people into long-term recovery, but it was an interesting thing to note. So again, we've sent that out. It's a pretty thick report, and hopefully you both have received it. And then lastly, I just want to mention that we've received some of the J&amp;J vaccine in Hamilton County. It's exciting because it's the one-shot vaccine. Its efficacy is great. People should definitely line up to get all three of these vaccines. This one's a little bit easier because you don't have to go back for the second shot, but it has the same preventive mechanism to keep people out of the hospital and to keep them from dying from COVID-19. So I just want to mention that it's, it's exciting. It's a bit of a milestone for us. I believe Hamilton County Public Health got 300 doses, as did the City Public Health Department and the other health departments in Hamilton County, and I, my expectation is that within the next few weeks, there will be more to come. So that's very exciting news. And then lastly, Madam President, I don't know if the Administrator is going to elaborate a little bit on what's happening at the federal level. The, the COVID relief bill is moving through. It's gone from the House to the Senate. There were some significant changes as of yesterday, and I'm hoping that the Administrator can elaborate a little bit on what that means to Hamilton County if what we have right now sticks, knowing that it's subject to change, but just provide us with an overview of what the status is.
Okay. Thank you. I see Jeff. You'd off.
Madam President, I'm happy to do, to, to chime in on that now or during my comments and by leaves, however you would prefer.
You can chime in on it now, Jeff.
Okay. So yeah, we are, we do continue to follow the, the latest stimulus movement at, in the, it's currently moved now to the Senate from the House. As Commissioner Drew House indicates, there have been some changes, some subtle, some more major, but the, the Senate version of the stimulus bill, or the American Rescue Plan as it's known, does continue to provide funding for state and local governments, which is very good news. The portion allocated for counties, I understand, has been reduced from $65 billion to $60 billion. So there's been a small reduction in the amount for, for counties, but not, not a significant reduction in the grand scheme of things. Those dollars can be used for things related to, or can be spent on things related to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including thing like, things like household assistance, small business assistance, assistance to nonprofits, as well as to offset the negative revenue impacts to counties that we have faced due to COVID-19, although there, the language in the Senate version is a little bit tighter, a little bit more restrictive than was the language in the House, but it is, it still does provide the opportunity for the county to alleviate some of its revenue shortfalls that we have seen, at least in certain areas, because of COVID-19. So we'll keep watching for, as guidance comes out, and even as this, as, as the Senate version continues to morph, because now they'll be in the process of, of submitting amendments. So what actually winds up coming out and going back over to the House may not look the same as what we're, what we're looking at right now, but if we're on a path to getting closer to the final language, there, there does remain revenue replacement flexibility in the bill, as well as the ability to invest directly in water and sewer infrastructure and broadband infrastructure was specifically called out. So we'll be watching for guidance on, on, on what the specific meaning behind that language is as well. So that's a little update, and we will keep you posted as we learn more.
Thank you for that, Jeff. I just have a few comments. Commissioner Drew House, you, you brought up about Jen, and she was the ray of sunshine at the end of the hall, so just very, just a very positive person, and I'm sure her impacted JFS. She will definitely make a great impact over there, so. And in addition, you mentioned about the end report as relates to the opiate meeting that they had, and my administrative assistant, Kim Lee, attended that virtually, and just very informative from what she had told me, so I'm glad that we were able to be a part of that. In addition, I just got off a Zoom meeting with CMHA. They have a grand opening for affordable housing called The Evanston. It was really exciting what they've done there with the dollars that they've been given from the federal government and also partnership with the city and the county. So I was really excited to be a part of that, and through the pandemic, they were able to still complete the project. So just really excited about the next one. They're going to have another grand opening on March the 11th. And also met with Phil Castellania of the Cincinnati Reds, who talked about his vision for Hamilton County and expressed our vision also, and where we look at moving forward for the county and looking at some options that may be available for those that are already here, that they will stay here. Some of the younger people, progressive ones, will stay here, and maybe outside of this region, will see what we're doing and want to move here. In addition, I had a good meeting with Nick Crossley of Emergency Management, the director, as he looks at being proactive. We looked at the incident down in Texas, and of course, he's always proactive, but just to look at the possibility, you know, if something happened here, to make sure we have all our ducks in a row in order to make sure that we're covered and all residents are covered. And I think that will, in my report, yeah, those are all the comments that I have. So I will go to Jeff Aludo, our Administrator, to have your report, and you have some by leaves also.
Thank you, Madam President. In addition to the comment from earlier, two by leaves today. The first is by leave one in your packet, and it relates to a contract for after-hours, the provision of after-hours security for multiple buildings downtown, including the Todd Portune Center, the Administration Building, 800 Broadway, 230 East 9th, the Courthouse, and the Justice Center. We received six bids on this contract. We were recommending a, an award of a contract to NSG as the lowest and best bidder. The total value, annual value of the contract is $738,000, which is, which is within our 2021 estimated budget of $770,000. The Administration does recommend approval. I do want to note that Rodney Loughlin, our risk manager, is on the line, and we, we both are happy to answer any questions that the board might have on this, so I offer for your consideration by leave number one.
Thank you, Jeff. I want to make a comment. I know we were talking about sometimes, oftentimes, we don't have people bid for, for different opportunities. And for me, to have six companies bid, that seems like a low number, but I think it's probably higher than we normally have for something like this. I could be wrong.
It, it, it is a decent number of bidders. I will indicate, Commissioners, in this particular case, Rodney can go into more detail if you, if you'd like, but we did have three of the six that were ultimately submitted unresponsive bids because the hours that they included in the bid submissions were not equivalent to the hours that we needed in the various post positions throughout the building, so they were unresponsive. And of the remaining three, we did award, we are recommending an award to the lowest and best bidder.
Okay. Thank you. And Rodney, welcome for being here. I open it up for Vice President Lisa Reese, if you have any comments or you need more information.
No, I'm, I'm good with this.
Okay. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Jeff noted, I, I was curious to know why the, there were so many that were not part of the final, and it's because they were not responsive. So Jeff answered my questions prior to the meeting, so I appreciate that. I'm, I'm fine with it as well.
Thank you. Rodney, would you like to add anything in addition?
No, I think that that pretty well sums it up.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to have everybody have their say, and you're, you're here on a special day. We don't get people for our meeting, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one. You've muted.
Ms. Somer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drew House?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two is a resolution amending the Hamilton County CARES Act plan and reallocating coronavirus relief fund amounts. Believe Holly is joining us today for this item. I will just quickly walk through, as the board is aware, through a report provided earlier this week, there are some, some changes in this final reallocation plan versus what we had previously submitted. The, I'll walk through just at a very high level what the plan includes. Again, this is the reallocation of the remaining $6.65 million worth of CARES Act funding. This doesn't include the other projects that are continuing through this year, once we knew we got the extension. So things like our testing program, PPE distribution, warehousing, all those things, even rental assistance, et cetera, that we continue forward. There was $6.65 million of just flat-out unaccounted-for dollars that we did not plan on spending, that we needed to reallocate. So the way we have, the way we are recommending those be reallocated are first to a third round of small business assistance at $4.35 million, funding for the Free Store Food Bank to accommodate increased demand for food security at $1 million. Now we get to where there's a little bit of a change, funding to initiate a program to help residents and businesses navigate the various assistance programs, and this is something that we have been supportive of, especially as we go back to the comments earlier in the meeting on a forthcoming second round of stimulus and wanting to ensure that we have an infrastructure in place so that as all of these programs, and there are a huge assortment of programs in the Senate bill and even in the House bill related to the American Rescue Plan, that we have an infrastructure in place to help direct people to areas of assistance that they might be looking for, whether it's nonprofits, whether it's schools, whether it's small businesses, whether it's just individuals. We want to make sure that we are playing a role in providing that, that traffic cop role of helping residents and stakeholders in Hamilton County get to the right place. So initially, we had put in $500,000 for that. We've done some more research on this, and we're recommending a dollar value of $1.1 million, which would include a contract with the United Way for the bulk of that, close to $900,000. You're not acting on that contract today. We're just notifying you how we came up with the, with the number, as well as around $140,000 for specific technical expertise related to businesses. We wanted to make sure that as we, as more small business relief hits the street, that we do more than just tell people to call various numbers to get in the queue, whether it's the SBA, or whether it's for the PPP, or even our own program. We wanted to provide a, a technical consulting arm that could help these small businesses work through some of the rigorous demands that they have in terms of how do you go about getting in line successfully for these dollars? So that's a part of that navigational program, and the impact that that had was reducing the amount that we could put towards the very needed replacement of our phone system. So we've taken that down to $200,000. I've talked with some of the offices on this. The plan for the remainder of that would be, first and foremost, there are a couple of moving parts still remaining in our CARES Act plan. For instance, we have $500,000 set aside for the alternative care facility. We are getting to the point in the path of this pandemic where I'm very hopeful that we don't have to talk about opening an alternative care facility, but we're not quite taking our foot off of that particular accelerator yet, but I would imagine in a month or two, as the vaccine continues to be distributed through the community, that we'll be coming back shortly and asking to reprogram those dollars. First order of business would be to reprogram then towards the phone system, which would be just about enough to cover that project. Secondly, we have this, potentially a second round of stimulus coming. And finally, if either of those sources did not work out, we would look to tap the general fund reserve and our capital reserve to pay for the remainder of the phone system. It's not budgeted in there, but we could, we would look for the money in the general fund reserve at that point. So those are the primary bins for the reallocation of the CARES Act. I'm going to defer to Holly to see if, Holly, do you have anything additional that you would like to, to hit on this, or anything that I may have passed over or left out?
Oh, you did a great job. Thank you. The only thing I would, I would add is a point of clarification for the, the navigation assistance program. That, that dollar amount, 1.1, is the additional money needed. We already have money, as you all know, set aside for some care coordination, so, so this would be in addition to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Happy to have any questions.
Thank you very much. Vice President Reese.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the navigational portion was, I think is very important. I think it's that connector for a lot of people who've never had to ask for help. You know, we've got a lot of taxpayers out here that have gotten hit by COVID, and I think it'll be another, we'll start seeing the other side of that in terms of getting hit economically, even after the, you know, the vaccine. So I do think it would be very helpful for people who've never had to ask for help, don't know where to go. It really helps be that bridge, and people feel more comfortable if they can talk to a, a person. And so certainly I support this, and it's something that the COVID Economic Relief and Recovery Task Force built as a, as an important component. Only thing I will add on there is that making sure that there's a report out of how many calls, you know, were taken and what was done with them, which will help us as a board to be able to, you know, look and see that this many people called, and this, you know, this is what happened with them, and it also will help our departments kind of trace, do a, I would say, a checking back and forth to have some kind of paper trail, so. But other than that, I, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm happy to support this. I think this lists out pretty clearly our priorities with these extra dollars that were left over from last year. Can I ask for an update related to the test and protect money? This was the 18 million that we had set aside for testing, and I think the idea was to do as much testing as possible, but maybe start to shift those dollars over to the vaccination effort once that became a higher-priced item than the testing itself. So I'm wondering if we can get an update on that. And just as an aside, I had a, a bit of a sore throat last week, and so my staff suggested that I go get tested for COVID. So I did, you know, because anything you have now, it's like, is this COVID? Oh my gosh, I think I might have COVID. So I went to one of our sites. I got in in the afternoon. I was there for 10 minutes tops, including the registration, the actual test. It went as cleanly as it could have gone, and within like 12 hours, I had my test results. So it is a spectacular problem. We, we're not having that kind of turnaround in the very beginning, but we are now. So people feel as though, you know, they need to know whether or not they've got COVID. I would just, I know we all would like to still encourage people, don't forget about the testing, test and protect, but there was a lot of money that we had allocated for that purpose. So Holly or Jeff, can you help us figure out what, what's the status of that money?
So I'll just, I'll turn it to Holly here just very, very quickly, but I do just want to note to your point, Commissioner, that, you know, I think you're exactly right, that we, we believe that at some point in time, the, the, the value of any $1 going to either vaccine distribution or testing is going to flip, and we're going to want to put as much into resources to getting shots in arms as, as possible. Every, every health expert that we've talked to has continued to say, though, that communities will continue to need to invest in robust testing for a period of time, and probably longer than we would expect. And so I think the, the board can be proud that we have put in place, I think, what Health Commissioner Kesterman calls the most robust public system of testing in the state of Ohio. So I do think we're, we want to look at gravitating towards more resources to vaccine. It won't be an entirety of doing that, though. So Holly, I know we've talked with the Health Collaborative about that. Can you talk a little bit about where we stand in that process?
Sure. Yes. Well, first of all, Commissioner Drew House, thank you for the reminder about our testing sites, and as Administrator Aludo said, it is essential that people still use those. It's still one of our, a great tool in fighting this pandemic, so thank you for that. Yes, we, we had budgeted and have an agreement with the Health Collaborative for $18 million. I believe, the last time I looked, which has been a few weeks, we had spent about five of that, but the invoices are always a, a month or so behind schedule, so. But we have, as, as Administrator Aludo said, had conversations with the Health Collaborative about still having that $18 million limit, not going over that, not additional money, but can money be moved based on forecasts for testing? Could it be potentially moved to, to vaccination assistance? And those are conversations we're having right now and talking through potential options.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you both. Just a couple comments, as we talked about the phone upgrade and the reduction of that currently, that if we can, as you were saying, Jeff, look at creative financing, because of course, I'm very adamant about not making sure we don't have to take anything out of the general fund, and I know both of you are, so I just wanted to, to say that publicly. And also, I took my vaccine on Thursday.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Did not have any side effects. I know everybody's different. Pfizer, so it went very well and very smooth, so.
Where did you get it?
Word of Deliverance.
Okay. So it was public health?
Yes.
Yeah. Great.
And he actually came at the end to visit, and I was, yeah, so.
We're jealous.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two, number two.
Ms. Somer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drew House?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. No additional by leaves, other than just to say very quickly that Bridget Doherty is not with us today. She has to be out of the office. I do want to thank Teresa Gilio and Lisa Daria for managing the, our virtual board meeting today. So we, we've gotten used to Bridget running it very smoothly, and she's now trained others in the office to do that, so I just wanted to thank Teresa and Lisa for their work today.
Yeah. Thank you both. So we have some consent agenda items, and I'd like to make a couple comments before I ask for the Commissioners' comments, just for those that are listening. Some of the things that are in the consent agenda, of course, is an agreement with Center for Closing the Health Gap through the Services, the Senior Tax Levy. There was a tax levy that was passed in 2017, and this gives them $250,000 toward helping with seniors. In addition, there's also monies coming out of the sheriff office, almost $7 million is coming out of their operating budget for Marine Patrol Assistance Grant. It's a matching fund. And we also have, you've heard in the last couple weeks, Willow Street, there's been some complaints and some concerns as it relates to some of the residents in that area, so we have three communications that we're accepting into the record. And also, Human Resources is adding two executive secretary positions to Hamilton County. And then JFS has a $500,000 And then JFS has a $500,000 allocation for group home services. And in addition, we have the Sheriff Department, there were three no objections to liquor licenses. So that's what we have on our agenda, along with the monthly investment report. So I would like, well, let me open up and see if anyone has any questions. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, I mean, Madam President. I just wanted to, I do have a couple. One is obviously the, and we had a presentation this week in our Tuesday meeting, and I appreciate that, and I wanted to just indicate, obviously, all of us, I could at least speak for myself, I had some concern about the Health Gap resolution contract taking so long. And I know that we had an explanation on that, but I do want to, you know, hope that in the future, we could be moving a little, a little bit sooner, because, you know, 2017 is 2021, we're getting ready to, you know, do some other levies as well, and those are people that could have been helped, and just would hope that whatever the glitches were can be corrected in the future for future contracts. So I do want to indicate that. Also, on items, the communication items on regarding Willow Street, I know all of us gotten a lot of emails, and our county engineer sent an email indicating that we, we don't control that, we don't control that particular item. And I would just think it might be helpful to have the county engineer's letter for the record, so it's in our minutes and on the record as to why. I think he pointed out some good points, and I think it'd be great to have it in the record. I don't know what the process is for that, but I would like to recommend that.
I have, I have it here, so I'll add it as an additional by leave item.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Madam President. And then my last thing is, item number five, the adding of two additional part-time positions. I just want to maybe, our administrator could talk about what that is, just to have a better understanding of what those two positions will be doing, or is it a flexible? I don't, I'm not sure exactly what they would be doing.
You're muted.
No, you're muted.
I think it's the first time I've ever done that, so.
It is your first time. All of us have, I know I'm guilty of it.
So, thank you. You can let me go on for a lot longer than that. So these are two positions being added to the table of organization, really goes back to the 2020 budget, and the board had authorized two positions to essentially staff the service and activity related to the Women and Girls Commission and the Boys to Men Initiative. I don't think, we, we put them on hold with COVID-19. So I don't think we, we, we haven't had the positions in, so we don't really yet have a good way of understanding the, you know, I think the assessment was made that these positions and the part-time positions would be capable of supporting those, the activity of those boards and commissions. Whether or not there would be additional capacity within the positions and how that would be allocated, we haven't yet had the chance to empirically test, just because we haven't had them in. So I, I don't know if either Commissioner Summer Dumas or Commissioner Dreehouse want to chime in on this, since it does relate to commissions that were established in 2018, I guess, 2017 and 18, I believe.
Thank you, Jeff. As you were saying, there are part-time positions, and the one I know for Boys to Men Initiative will definitely be needed to facilitate that initiative. That's a, Commissioner Dreehouse, would you like to comment?
Well, I feel similarly about that, the work of the Commission on Women and Girls. We've been overwhelmed by the recommendations, making sure, and they relate to pay equity, domestic violence, period products. We're making a lot of progress and felt as though it would be important to have some continuity there and move those things forward more quickly by having a part-time staff person kind of bird-dogging that work.
Any other comments?
I do have one question. So these two positions will only be able to do that, because, you know, when you start adding staff, you know, we get a lot of, I just wonder, will they have flexibility as say something else comes up that we need them, or they, or is it, because I was trying to read the thing, and it made it seem like they have flexibility. I'm not sure if they do or not, or would they, to also do, if there's other things that might come up that the board, we might, you know, need, they could do those things too, or not.
So as they were designated, we were both asked to present a budget, and within my budget and also Commissioner Dreehouse's budget, she put it for her initiative, and I put it for the, the other initiative. So to answer your question, I'm sure they could be flexible if someone needed them, but they're specifically for those specific areas.
Gotcha.
With nothing, no other questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items one, two, five, and six, and receive for the record items three, four, seven, and eight. Is there a second?
A second.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any more business to come before the commission? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.